Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, March 31st. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you, everyone. Will you please rise for those in the room for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence, and those at home, if you'd like to join us, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next order of business would be proclamations, but we have no proclamations at this time. I think, though, Madam Clerk, I'd like to talk with you about maybe having proclamations written to the record for members that want to have them and mailed to people, so we can do that. So we'll talk about that after the meeting, and I'll send an update email to the members. Should I make this announcement for public comment? My papers are different. So this is an announcement regarding our public comment. Council chambers is still in lockdown, and we continue to encourage members of the community to email your comments to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerks@pittsburghpa.gov. And the clerk will forward all the comments on to council members so that we can still stay in touch and understand what the public would like for us to know about specific legislation before or work before council. Again, the email is city, C-I-T-Y, clerks, C-L-E-R-K-S, office, O-F-F-I-C-E, at Pittsburgh, spelt out, all lowercase, PA.gov. And will this be, this is on the website, correct? Yes. Okay. And this will continue to be the process until further notice. We are trying to work on some additional ways for the public to comment, but it's getting very challenging. The next order of business will be presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 252, Resolution consenting to an amendment to the ill- tried planning study in authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to take necessary actions to seek necessary consent for, and if obtained, to undertake an amended planning study as a prerequisite to considering an amendment to the current East Liberty Transit Revitalization Investment District Boundary.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 242, Resolution granting unto Brendan Noon their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install two Slim AC condenser units in a planter box screened with cedar fencing on the side of building at 1247 Palo Alto Street in the 22nd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill Number 243, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Alfred Benich and Company for Preliminary and Final Design Services During Construction and Miscellaneous Services for the Swineburn Bridge Replacement Project and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof Not to Exceed $830,572.47. Bill Number 244, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Place a Deed Restriction Upon Paulson Park in Reitman Park as Required by the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, which Provided Funds for the Paulson Park and Reitman Park Redevelopment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Good morning. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 245, Resolution Providing for a Non-Monetary Settlement in Favor of Brian Campbell, its Esquire, Fully Leasing the City from All Claims and Liability for Alleged Money's Ode to Him for Professional Services Provided to City of Pittsburgh Professional Police Officers, FOP Members, Who Were Named as Parties to Lawsuits Filed in State or Federal Court, as Described in a Lawsuit Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 246, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of $47,500 in Favor of Douglas Anderson Administrator and His Attorneys Joyce and Bittner, Fully Releasing the City from All Claims and Liabilities for Alleged Personal Injuries, as Described in a Lawsuit Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Thank you. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Do we not have a, are those under my committee? I thought those were under Councilman Lavelle's. I'm sorry.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 249, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 265, and Chapter 277, sections 26703 and 26707, to change the effective date to June 30th, 2020. Bill Number 250, Resolution Requiring the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Create and Palmetate or Update Existing Operating Procedures, Permits, Forms, Rules, and Regulations Related to Vehicle or Transportation Operations Not Already Underway or Otherwise Sanctioned by Existing Ordinance or Regulation Over, Above, In, Within, On, or Under the Right-of-Way Within an Area Zone as P. or Parks District, as Established by Chapter 905, Special Purpose Districts by the City of Pittsburgh Zoning Code. Bill Number 251, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of Finance on behalf of the city to take appropriate and necessary actions to negotiate and secure lines of credit for the purpose of maintaining and supporting continuous operations during and immediately after the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have a motion to waive Rule 8 on the First and the Third Bill.
Do we have a motion to waive Rule 8? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Who appear on today's meeting with Councilman Lavelle. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management, which has been a very busy committee this month.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 247, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with populace in order to receive access to their visualization platform suite, which will further the city's ability to deliver mobility services to residents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 248, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX, Zoning, Chapter 915, Environmental Performance Standards, Subsection 91506, Sustainable Development for Publicly-Financed Buildings by Deleting Certain Language and Adding a New Subsection 91508, Title Sustainable Development for City-Owned Facilities.
Thank you. And then for myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no papers right now. Is there, we'll now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we'll move on to committees. We'll move on to the next order of business, the Report of Committees for Final Action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 238, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for March 24, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 213, Ordinance Amendment in Pittsburgh, the City Code at Title I, Administrative Article VII, Procedures, Chapter 1661, Contracts, in Order to Increase the Councilmanic Amount from $3,000 to $5,000. Bill Number 216, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City Through Tax Sales, Items A and B, 11 and 13 D.C. Bill Number 217, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjurning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Item A through K. 12, 10 West Moreland, 7301 Monticello, 228 Kramer, 2922 Bangsville, 1005 Morrison, 1701 and 1705 Brighton, 0 Marquez, 1519 and 1529 Brighton, and 69 Watson.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the titles of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage. We'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 239, Report of the Committee on Public Works for March 24, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 214, Ordinance Amendment in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VII, Business License in Chapter 719, Vendors and Peddlers, by Amending the Existing Language of Section 71910 to Add Sites Approved by the Sidewalk and Vending Committee to the List of Sites Approved by Council.
Is that it?
Bill Number 215, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of Management and Budget to Renew the None Exclusive License Agreement with the Federal General Services Administration for the Veterans Affairs Highland Drive Campus at 7180 Highland Drive for Limited Use and to Conduct Due Diligence Pursuant to the Application Approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Justice to Acquire the Property for Law Enforcement and Emergency Management Purposes.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, the bills are now ready for final passage. Those in favor of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes are finally passed. Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 240, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for March 24, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 234, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter into an Agreement with the Flexible LLC for Professional On-Site Childcare Services for a Sum Not to Exceed $131,625 over three years and for the Payment of Costs Thereof.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, will the clerk, or hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to our last committee for the day, Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 241, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for March 24, 2020, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 218, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 10, Building, Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code Adoption, by adopting the 2015 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and with the Amendments thereto, specified in Section 10402 of the City Code, as well as making certain amendments to the existing language of Section 10402 of the City Code.
Thank you. You've heard the reading. Councilman, you have an amendment.
Yeah, motion to amend Bill 218.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Can we take the vote for the amendment?
You take a voice vote.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The bill's amended. Any discussion on the amended bill?
Yes. Teresa, this is Anthony. Hey, Bobby, this was the most common sense piece of paper that somebody put in front of me so far. You know, I couldn't tell you the onslaught of phone calls I got from people who were, had signs for occupancy permits, and, you know, we didn't have a record of it. So they were getting drilled with having to hire an engineer and do all these things. So by grandfathering these people in was just the best thing that you could have done. So thanks for your leadership on it. You know, I can't wait to tell the people in my district that it's no longer going to be a problem.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that. They're still required to pay the maintenance fee to get the license, so it's still going to be inspected. And this really, you know, in a time like this, when small businesses come back online and they're, you know, trying to recoup, this is one less thing that they have to maybe spend money on to try and come into, you know, basically, you know, the safety is number one thing, so they'll still be doing the inspection, but this allows them to really continue business without having to worry about that piece.
Absolutely. And it's not even the money, the $75, it's the headaches that you have to go through to do it. And, you know, this was in place when, before Sarah came in, and I just want to say, Sarah, I think, is doing a wonderful job. And, you know, I hope she's put on as a full-time director through, after she's maybe back from maternity leave. But, so, yeah, just thanks again, Bobby. I wish you were there a year ago and had this amendment because most of my businesses have already been cited for it, so good job.
Thank you. Any other members?
Well, thanks. I thank everyone for the discussion.
Any other members? Councilman Wilson, do you want to say anymore?
No, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay, well, then I'd like to say thank you, and thank you for allowing me to sponsor with you, and for your staff, and the director, all working together. I just want to thank everyone. I think that we all realize, not only was this an issue before this crisis, health crisis that we're going through, and this economic crisis that we're going through, but it is definitely an issue right now for our small businesses. And the last thing we want to do is come after a small business, cite a small business during a time when most are struggling to keep their doors open, if they still have kept their doors open. So I want to thank you very much, and the timing couldn't have been more perfect. Thank you. And so now having...
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, the bill is ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Mr. Coghill.
Is that me? Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we'll move on to motions and resolutions, and I have an announcement. Does it find it? I'll tell you what it says. I put it over here. So we have, we'll adjourn this meeting, the regular meeting, and we'll break for a few minutes before we come back to the Standing Committees meeting, in which Councilman Lavelle will chair, and he walks in on cue. He just walked in. You can find updated council meeting information, you can find any updated council meeting information posted on the City Council Meeting webpage at pittsburghpa.gov/clerk/council-meetings. Do we have anything from the members? Any discussion from the members? Hearing none, I just want to, thank you. I just want to thank all of you. I don't know if people realize that, how difficult it is to do these meetings via phone, especially when you have legislation and different things. We are looking into other options for our meetings, since this is going on a little bit longer than we had anticipated, and we'll keep the public updated through our website and through social media, the Clerk's Office through social media, and hopefully all of us will share that information as well when we make some decisions here. But I want to thank all the council members and your staff for continuing to work from home, for the people, just because they're not physically here, I want people to realize that you are still receiving calls, you are still taking emails, you are still keeping up on social media, and still helping your communities with all the necessities that we can, and it's a very challenging time for everyone, and hopefully we all get through this. But I want to thank all of you, and of course, everyone working to get us through this crisis in the entire city, including our medical staff and all our personnel here within the city. With that said, can I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
No move.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
comment to City Clerk's Office at PittsburghPA.gov. All submitted comments will be forwarded to council members. We will now move on to our standing committee agenda. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Ms. Gross?
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Lavelle, chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. That takes us to our first committee for today, which is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have two supplemental papers, Bill 249.
Bill 249, ordinance amended supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title II, fiscal Article IX, property taxes, Chapter 265. Exemptions for residential improvements, Section 26504 and 26509 and Chapter 267. Exemption for industrial and commercial improvements, Sections 26703 and 26707, to change the effective date to June 30th, 2020.
Need a motion, Councilman O'Connor?
Motion approved, brief discussion.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to thank everybody. These are LERTA extensions. I know Councilman Gross and I did speak about maybe changing some of the language for next Tuesday, but we were talking to the administration about this bill, and I guess it's going to be the following bill about taking out possibly a line of credit. But we're not approving any permits at this time, and there are some developments that are following the LERTA guidelines, but obviously can't get a permit approved, so we are just extending it till the 30th of June, is what the mayor's office had requested.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman?
Councilwoman Smith?
Councilman, this is Councilwoman Smith.
Yes.
Can, I just want to make sure I mentioned that I'm glad that we're taking this action today. I think that we need to talk a little bit more about what we're doing in the future because the economy and development and construction, all these things have taken a very significant hit during this time. So whatever conversations took place prior to this, I think we have to have additional conversations because we're certainly in a much different place than we were before. And I know what it means to my district because we don't receive these types of incentives in our side of town, and we'd like to make sure that we are. So I'd like to have some conversations about that after we all discuss, you know, settle down. But I do think Councilman's right that we do have to have some conversations, but I do think that the conversations that happened previously, I think everything has changed considering what we're going through right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
I'll simply add that I agree with Councilwoman Smith that once we come out of this crisis, we're not going to fully understand what sort of LERTA is necessary. We may need LERTAs that incentivize people actually going back to work and getting back onto the workforce. So I think we'll have to have a very robust conversation about LERTA once we indeed do get out of this. Hearing no further conversation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Bill 251.
Bill 251, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget and Director of Finance on behalf of the city to take appropriate and necessary actions to negotiate insecure lines of credit for the purpose of maintaining and supporting continuous operations during and immediately after the COVID-19 pandemic.
Need a motion?
Motion approved, discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman O'Connor?
I want to first thank all members. I think we're all listed as sponsors. I want to thank the administration. I spoke to them last week about this, their budget office, our budget office, and this is just to get prepared for what type of loss we, I mean, we know we're going to take a loss with parking revenue, amusement tax, other taxes, but this is just to get us prepared. And other cities across the country are starting to do this right now as well, just to get prepared, and hopefully there is a local bank that the mayor's office and budget can negotiate with, with our finance department, to hopefully help us get a line of credits so we don't have to, you know, make layoffs or raise taxes in the future. We are just at a crazy time right now, and this is just to get a little bit ahead of ourselves so we can break down the numbers in a couple months, and then obviously it will have to come back to council, whatever decision we all decide. But this is just being a little bit proactive. I want to thank all council and the mayor's office for being supportive. That's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That will take us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Invoices are approved. We also have, we do not have interdepartmental transfers, but we do have P-cards in need of approval. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the P-cards? Quick discussion, members should see in the P-cards that there are at least two purchases for personal protection equipment, which is obviously critical and necessary, but I think it's important, and maybe Council President Smith, you may be willing to lead this conversation, to have a conversation about sort of what is our approach to continue to acquire personal protection equipment for our public safety workers? Can we potentially share in the expense with the county? Can we potentially share in with the state or the federal government? What does that look like? Is there a single source for us to acquire the equipment from? But it's probably a conversation we need to have.
Second, I just want to respond real quickly. I just that I think we have a meeting coming up today with the update from Chief of Staff Gilman, and maybe that's a conversation you, Councilman O'Connor, since he chairs public safety, and your finance, maybe the three of us can have with Chief of Staff Gilman.
Sounds good.
Or the mayor's office. Happy to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll try to arrange it today. Okay?
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the P-cards?
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That'll take us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 229?
Bill 229, resolution providing that the city, providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement with service provided for professional services in connection with the 2020 City Cuts Lawn Care Program and providing of payment not to exceed $300,000.
Need a motion?
Motion approved, discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman O'Connor?
Second. I want to first thank all members. I think we're all listed as sponsors. I want to thank the administration. I spoke to them last week about this, their budget office, our budget office, and this is just to get prepared for what type of loss we, I mean, we know we're going to take a loss with parking revenue, amusement tax, other taxes, but this is just to get us prepared. And other cities across the country are starting to do this right now as well, just to get prepared, and hopefully there is a local bank that the mayor's office and budget can negotiate with, with our finance department, to hopefully help us get a line of credits so we don't have to, you know, make layoffs or raise taxes in the future. We are just at a crazy time right now, and this is just to get, get a little bit ahead of ourselves so we can break down the numbers in a couple months, and then obviously it will have to come back to council, whatever decision we all decide. But this is just being a little bit proactive. I want to thank all council and the mayor's office for being supportive. That's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That will take us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Invoices are approved. We also have, we do not have interdepartmental transfers, but we do have P-cards in need of approval. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion on the P-cards? Quick discussion, members should see in the P-cards that there are at least two purchases for personal protection equipment, which is obviously critical and necessary, but I think it's important, and maybe Council President Smith, you may be willing to lead this conversation, to have a conversation about sort of what is our approach to continue to acquire personal protection equipment for our public safety workers? Can we potentially share in the expense with the county? Can we potentially share in with the state or the federal government? What does that look like? Is there a single source for us to acquire the equipment from? But it's probably a conversation we need to have.
Second, I just want to respond real quickly. I just that I think we have a meeting coming up today with the update from Chief of Staff Gilman, and maybe that's a conversation you, Councilman O'Connor, since he chairs public safety, and your finance, maybe the three of us can have with Chief of Staff Gilman.
Sounds good.
Or the mayor's office. Happy to, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'll try to arrange it today. Okay?
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the P-cards?
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That'll take us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 229?
Bill 229, resolution providing that the city, providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement with service provided for professional services in connection with the 2020 City Cuts Lawn Care Program and providing of payment not to exceed $300,000.
Need a motion?
Motion approved, discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm going to be abstaining on this today. I just, you know, $300,000. I had some questions, and I'll do that offline before Tuesday. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That will take us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Bill 229?
Bill 229, resolution providing that the city, providing that the city of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement with service provided for professional services in connection with the 2020 City Cuts Lawn Care Program and providing of payment not to exceed $300,000.
Need a motion?
Motion for discussion.
To approve with discussion.
Motion to approve discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm going to be abstaining on this today. I just, you know, $300,000. I had some questions, and I'll do that offline before Tuesday. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, abstaining.
The bill is recommended. Bill 230?
Bill 230, resolution granting unto Western Pennsylvania Conservancy their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new rain garden on Lot 125A98 with trench drains on the inlet and outlet side of the garden located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Frankstown Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, abstaining.
The bill is recommended. Bill 230?
Bill 230, resolution granting unto Western Pennsylvania Conservancy their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new rain garden on Lot 125A98 with trench drains on the inlet and outlet side of the garden located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Frankstown Avenue in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 233?
Bill 233, resolution granting unto Chase Bank their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new round sign on an existing elevator shaft at 2401 Smallman Street, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 231?
Bill 231, resolution granting unto Daisy Wilson Artist Community their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new set of stairs and stoop to the front of the existing building at 1727 Bedford Avenue in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 232?
Bill 232, resolution granting unto MMEJM Properties LLC their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, a new round sign on an existing elevator shaft at 2401 Smallman Street, 2nd Ward, 7th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 233?
Bill 233, resolution granting unto Chase Bank their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, an awning to be placed over the ATM machine at 1030 Fifth Avenue, 1st Ward, 6th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold for a cable-capped public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 233?
Bill 233, resolution granting unto Chase Bank their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, an awning to be placed over the ATM machine at 1030 Fifth Avenue, 1st Ward, 6th Council District.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. Bill 235?
Bill 235, resolution, amending Resolution Number 840 entitled Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Various Line Items Funded by the CDBG Emergency Solution Grant, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and Home Investment Partnerships Program.
Need a motion?
Motion approved for discussion. Second.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, so since the federal government doesn't approve their budget until after the cities, there was additional CDBG funds that came to us, and these were the routes that it was distributed. You can see before you where they are going to. I will note that I am happy to see that the Allegan Circle, which has been something that's been a long do, to change that, that land, that circle around Allegan Center, this additional monies for this project will allow for some streetlights. The previous design did not include streetlights, and this one does. And so this, the design took place before Nova Place was up and running, so I'm glad to see that this is going to be able to get the money that it needs to complete the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. If the clerk could read the next two together, they both need help for public hearings?
Bill 236, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Ewalth House located at 186 Home Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood, 9th Ward. Bill Number 237, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Maori Addison House located at 5134 Carnegie Street in the Lawrenceville neighborhood, 10th Ward.
Need a motion?
Motion to hold for a cable-capped public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was held for public hearings. That'll take us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Bill 141?
Bill 141, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Need a motion?
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, this is one of these things that's kind of caught in limbo because since we're not issuing additional permits, I'm not sure when this one will get the permits it needs before we approve the sewer module. So I'm going to motion to hold for three weeks, but keep in mind when it comes back in three weeks, I'm not sure that it will be ready then.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of holding the bill for three weeks?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill was held for three weeks. That exhausts our agenda. I do have some meeting announcements for the public. You can find updated council meeting information posted on the city council meeting webpage, which is PittsburghPA.gov/ Clerk/Council-Meetings. I also want to acknowledge and thank Sarah Pelt, who is our language interpreter. She's actually in council chambers with us this morning, and also want to thank Mike Gals of Tri-State Video, who has been helping us get through these times. Any other conversation from members?
Councilman Lavelle, this is Coghill. I just wanted to thank the other members. You know, I've had personal conversations with most of you just to find out, you know, it's really good to know what's going on in your district and feedback you're getting and what kind of calls you're getting. And a lot of you have a really, a lot of great, you know, information source out there and emergency contacts, particularly Councilwoman Gross. We've been cheering, picking your stuff and kind of, I guess, sharing it, I guess is what they say, people in my neighborhood. So thanks to everybody for, you know, conversations we've had.
Thank you. Any other members?
This is Councilman Gross.
Councilman?
So, thank you. I just, I assume Councilman Coghill referring to the spreadsheet that my staff is maintaining. If anyone's looking for it, it's an open document, so it's linked off of, of course,